Now, my question is this. I have found out by a city councilman that it has been our mayor that made the decision that prayer will not be allowed in this city council meeting. My question then is to the city council, by the raising of your hand, do you agree with what she just stated, that there will be no prayer in this meeting?
Your premise is incorrect. I did not say that prayer will not be allowed. I said, I took off the part of the agenda where the invocation is given. That does not mean that prayer is not allowed.
Then, may I ask, what would be the rule in being allowed to do prayer?
I didn't understand your question. Can you repeat it?
My question is, now we are at the time there would be prayer, so what would be the requirements for prayer to be done in this city council meeting? An example, could I say, can I do the prayer for tonight?
No, you're not on the agenda, and you have made your point of order. And now you can sit down so that we can proceed with the agenda. If you would like to make further comment on this issue, there is an opportunity at the end of the agenda.
Right. Second point of order then, what is the rule to be able to do the prayer for the opening of this meeting?
If one of the city council members would like to offer a prayer at the beginning of the meeting, they are absolutely welcome to do that.
So then, by the fact that we have no prayer here, makes me wonder if people who did not raise their hand just did it out of showmanship, to not stand?
Brother Christopher, you have made your two points of order. I'd now ask you to take your seat, and if you have further public comment, you can do that at the end of this meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I have two proclamations tonight. The first is a proclamation honoring the USS Asheville SSN 758 Day. Commander Bradley, if we could have your crew who are here join us, as well as Mr. Vasilek. We are lucky enough to have celebrated Memorial Day yesterday with you and your crew, and today we would like to offer you a proclamation. And I will first read it and then invite you to make a couple of comments and introduce the folks that are with you today. Whereas the USS Asheville SSN 758 was built at the Newport News Shipbuilding and Dry Dock Company in Newport News, Virginia, and launched on February 24th, 1990, and commissioned on September 28th, 1991. And whereas citizens of Asheville employed by Asheville Industries, Inc., a subsidiary of Newport News Shipbuilding, designed and built many quality components for the USS Asheville. And whereas the commissioning of the USS Asheville, 250 citizens from Asheville traveled to Norfolk, Virginia to participate in that notable event, with Senator Jesse Helms giving the principal address and his wife Dorothy being the vessel's sponsor and ceremonially breaking a bottle of Biltmore Estate champagne on the Asheville's hull. And whereas, for the past 23 years, the Los Angeles-class nuclear-powered fast-attack submarine Asheville, the fourth U.S. Navy vessel to bear that name, while homeported at the naval bases of Norfolk, Virginia, San Diego, California, and Pearl Harbor, Hawaii, engaged in independent patrols and deployments with several naval strike groups in areas including the Pacific, South, and Central America, and other undisclosed locations. That's in quotations. And whereas, the Asheville's highly successful operations during those deployments were the result of excellent seamanship and performance by her skilled crews of officers and enlisted men, all top-notch submariners resulting in the Asheville earning well-deserved meritorious commendations. And whereas, the USS Asheville SSN 758 and her crew maintain the legacy of the three previous U.S. Navy ships named after this city and continue the bond with the citizens of Asheville, now therefore I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim May 27th, 2014, as USS Asheville SSN 758 Day in the City of Asheville and encourage all citizens to celebrate this day with appropriate festivities. Thank you. So, all the way from Hawaii, we have Commander Bradley here with us today. And if you could introduce for us your crew, and I know you're also here with our local Ken Vasilek, who helped organize or did organize yesterday's ceremonies.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the proclamation on behalf of the USS Asheville and her crew. This is quite an honor, and we are pleased to be here and have a partnership with your city.
For the audience, I've brought with me some crew members. I'd like to bring all 165 of them with me if I could. But this is a great subset to bring with me. With me I have Lieutenant O'Hearn, Aaron O'Hearn, who grew up not too far away in Knoxville, Tennessee. I have my 2013 Junior Sailor of the Year, David Christensen, from Salt Lake City, Utah. And my 2013 Sailor of the Year, On Tin, who is also the Squadron Sailor of the Year, went on to compete as the Pacific Fleet Sailor of the Year. And many thanks to Ken Vasilek, the ship's fantastic sponsor and communication piece here in Asheville, and always, always representing us well and communicating with us. I just couldn't ask for a better link here in Asheville than Ken Vasilek. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, on behalf of the Asheville, we know you have an exhibit in the City Hall. We walked through it this morning. We would like to refresh the 758 portion of the exhibit with a few small items.
That's nice.
First, I'd like to present a flag flown over USS Asheville, the 23rd of May, in Pearl Harbor. Even though we're in dry dock, we still proudly fly the flags, and I'd like to present this for the case, to put in remembrance of the submarine. Of course, the lifeblood of most of the crew, coffee, although today's sailors are quite fond of the energy drinks, but I thought this was appropriate, one of the most commonly used implements on the ship, the coffee mug, and a way to represent my fantastic executive officer who has to stay back and stay in charge this week. I know that this probably has the wrong school on it.
[laughter]
But they sent us a football about a year and a half ago to do a spirit shout-out for the NC State Wolfpack Football Team. And after our most recent deployment, I thought it was appropriate that all of the submarines in San Diego, except for one, covered the Western Pacific operations in 2013. And that was nearly exclusively. And so I called our Wolfpack Westpac from the San Diego Submarine Force there, and with our port visits to Yakuwka, Subic Bay, Yakuwka and Guam, signed by my top department heads and executive officer and chief of the boat. So we'd like to present that for the case.
My kids are gonna love this.
Okay. And then lastly, of course, some wall hardware to you. Honorable Mayor, we appreciate all that you've done for us in this proclamation and for the city council to find an appropriate place.
Thank you.
Represent the submarine. Okay. And a few, a few small things, and it's something for you, since you're in command here at Asheville.
[laughter]
Share the ball cap. And my command coin, a lapel pin.
Oh, very nice.
And one, one for each of the council members, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on down and...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Of course, Mayor, if that, that football disappears, we know where to look for it. First will be Mr. Putnam's office.
Thank you, man. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Appreciate all you do. Big pin.
And the vice mayor spent some time as host today and offered some gifts from us to you as well, so I'm glad that we were able to do that. Maggie's, she's gonna go decorate now, or, you know. You can stay, or you can take this opportunity to... I would recommend it. Thank you.
Maggie's doing the Heisman.
Okay, so on a completely different note, our next proclamation is hemp history week, and Timothy Sadler is here. And if, Tim, if you have anyone else with you, I wasn't sure. Okay.
You ever been up to Bill's Tower?
Feel free. Okay, I'm gonna start and read this, and then you can say any words.
Okay, great.
You know the real, you watch the whole thing.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Whereas industrial hemp has been grown in the U.S. since the first European settlers arrived in early 1600s. And whereas George Washington and Thomas Jefferson grew hemp and actively advocated for commercial hemp production, and whereas the City of Asheville is home to the first house in America to be permitted using hempcrete, and thus has a unique role in hemp history. And whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize hemp's broad scope of potential uses with over 25,000 known applications. And whereas it is fitting and proper to celebrate industrial hemp and to encourage local and independent business, many of which feature products that incorporate hemp. And whereas industrial hemp yields on average four times as much paper per acre as trees do, which makes hemp paper a green alternative, now therefore I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of Asheville, do hereby proclaim June 2nd through 8th as hemp history week. And of course, we don't meet that week, so we're doing this now, in the City of Asheville, and encourage all citizens to learn about and to appreciate industrial hemp.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for this proclamation. I moved to Asheville to be a part of the local economics movement, local economy. And there is no thing that will work towards a true local economy than industrial hemp. And I have with me here a couple of folks that would like to give a couple of quick remarks as well. First, Claudia, and then Tim Callahan.
Hi, thank you. I've never stood in front of the council before, and I'm excited to do so. And it's exciting to hear you proclaim hemp, because I just recently became involved with learning about hemp and know that there are many states around us that are legislating on behalf of hemp. I know Tennessee just recently passed some legislation, and this movement is growing, and it's exciting, like Tim said, that it's gonna help the local economy. I'm a teacher, and there are some budget issues with making sure things get funded. And I know that hemp is a way to grow our local economy. So, thanks.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, Tim Callahan. I've been involved in the design and construction of hemp buildings for about six years now, since it was really its first introduction into the States. And Asheville does, in fact, have the first two permitted hemp buildings. Right now, we are, even with only two, we are pretty much recognized nationally as a center for hemp construction. In my own, in my own work, we, we work with people all over the world right now. The momentum for this product and this material is growing. I think in about another year, the lid is gonna come off due to some certification issues as far as the meeting requirements for the building departments in the States. I think it's very exciting to officially recognize this. I think that Asheville is on the map, and I, and I see that where we're going, we could really be seen nationally and internationally as a center for the development and implementation of this product. So thank you for your recognition.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I add one thing real quickly? Billy, I have this information about a movie, a documentary about hemp, and the email, I'm helping pass out flyers, and they said that you are more than welcome to come, and the director would comp your ticket and any guests that you would like to bring.
And the date, just so anyone watching?
It's on there. It's on June 17th, and it's at 7:30, and it's at the Asheville Community Theater.
Okay, thank you. Okay, turning to the consent agenda, is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone would like to be considered separately? Nope? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Anyone wishing to make comment on any item on the consent agenda? All right. Any questions or comments from council? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're to the presentations and reports. The first presentation slash report, are we okay?
Sure.
Is the downtown police enhancement plan, given by Chief Anderson. Thank you, Chief Anderson, for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. This is a presentation basically explaining our downtown enhancement plan and some of the initiatives that we have taken to address some of the issues that we're seeing or have been seeing downtown. Just to give you some background, during the months of July and August of 2013, in the Central Business District, we saw a significant increase in crime as compared to 2012. Violent crime, we saw an increase of 52 percent. Property crime increased 34 percent. And we also saw an increase in complaints reference to nuisance behaviors. One of the steps that we put in place late in 2013 was the downtown enhancement plan, and basically, it was to address some of the criminal behavior that we were seeing in the CBD. We took a proactive enforcement approach through fiscal arrests versus citations, and also increased our level of staffing in the Central Business District. The mission of the downtown unit remained one based on community-oriented policing. However, we saw that enforcement of criminal violations took precedent over the traditional warning systems that we were using. Our goal as far as the downtown enhancement plan was to reduce crime and increase public safety in the Central Business District, and also reduce crime and nuisance behavior that we were seeing, were some of the pros that we were trying to accomplish. Some of the cons, at that time, we really didn't identify any, but as we got more into the process, we did have some concerns that came up. From a fiscal perspective, we did all of this while staying within our existing budget. After a 90-day period, we looked at some of the strategies that we had been using, and we saw a significant decrease in crime from September 2013 through December 2013 as compared to the previous year. We saw where robberies decreased by 22 percent, aggravated assault decreased by 36 percent, and overall violent crime in the Central Business, Central Business District decreased by 24 percent. We also saw a decrease in property crimes, such as burglaries, decreased by 36 percent, and overall property crime decreased by 23 percent. The number of citations that were issued in the CBD increased significantly, and we also saw a major increase in business checks. And this is basically where the officers would go out and have personal contact with many of the, with the business owners. And also, a significant increase in our crime prevention efforts, working with the different businesses and residents in the Central Business District. As a result of what we saw at the end of 2013, we wanted to continue this effort, and we implemented the 2014 downtown enhancement plan with a couple of significant initiatives that we wanted to address. One of the first ones was the homeless transient outreach program, and that program was designed to provide a written outline of available resources and strategies to ensure that the populations that we were seeing in the downtown area were aware of the different services that was provided. This was something that was already in place, but we really wanted to put it more in effect. And basically, when we would run across individuals that were transient, homeless, or in need of different type of services, we wanted to make sure that they were aware of the different services in the community. One of the other initiatives that we implemented in APD was, we had our homeless coordinator, Heather Dillashaw, come in and provide roll call training to all of our officers. We felt that it was very important that each and every one of our officers has a understanding of the city's strategies on dealing with homelessness, how the city's position on the tenure plan to end chronic homelessness, so that anytime that they're out there and having to address or come in contact with individuals who might be in need, they would know the strategies that the police department and the city was taking. We also have a goal of training all of our officers in crisis intervention training, that CIT training, and that basically provides our officers with tools to use anytime they come in contact with persons in crisis. We feel that it's very important, not just in the CBD, but anytime that we have to deal with individuals who may be in need, that our officers have the best training available to deal with that. And also, to continue our partnership with the different resources that we have in the area, we felt that that was very important as well. One of the other things that we implemented in APD was the Asheville Police Department policy on homeless persons. And the purpose of this directive is to outline standard operating procedures to be used in interaction with homeless individuals, homeless camp protocols, and information on outreach assistance to social service resources. This came basically from benchmarking other cities, similar cities who have some of the same struggles that we do. This particular policy was drafted along, using the Milwaukee, Wisconsin model. This is something that you rarely see in a law enforcement agency that has a specific policy on this issue. So I think this was a great step on our department's part to, to address this particular problem. We also continued our meetings with ABC and ALA with any establishments to sell alcohol. This was a way of communicating with them and making sure that they had all the tools available anytime they deal with their businesses as some of the problems that we have. It's a form of solidifying communication between our downtown merchants, our bar owners, as well as law enforcement, to help them with some of the situations that, that they might be dealing with. One of the other things that we implemented was the expanding our volunteer program to our downtown substation. We now are open on Wednesday through Friday from 12, from noon to 4 p.m., and this is basically staffed with volunteers. And the purpose of that was to make the substation more available for anyone who may walk in or have questions or need direction. And it also allows our officers to be out on the streets, dealing with whatever issues they need to deal with. We're also reviewing the street entertainer ordinance. We've benchmarked other cities to see how our ordinance compares to some other cities and how it can be improved. We hope to meet with the legal department and bring the recommendations forward to them, and eventually possibly bring some recommended revisions to our street entertainment, entertainer ordinance. We feel that this will be one way addressing some of the panhounding issues that we're, complaints that we're getting now, particularly aggressive panhounding. So we'll be discussing that with the legal department. We're also working with the schedules of our park wardens to make sure that they're more available and responsive to the community, particularly in Pritchard Park, and some of the issues that we have been having there. We've also updated our 2014 shoplifter and graffiti guide. This is a tool that we can provide to the merchants in the CBD, so they, they have the most recent information when it comes to individuals who may be a problem, whether it's graffiti or shoplifting, and making sure they, they have that information. For our field training officer program, all new officers that come on with APD are rotated through our downtown unit. The purpose of that is to make sure that they understand the challenges we have to face when dealing with issues in the downtown area. So this is to provide them additional training and awareness of those concerns. The Safe Cam initiative is a program that we're going to present to the Public Safety Committee next Monday. And basically, it's a public-private partnership where businesses or individuals that currently have camera surveillance system would register those systems with the police department. This would give us the opportunity anytime there might be a crime committed, we could go back and review the video footage that might have been captured by the surveillance cameras. It's a completely volunteer program where businesses would register their equipment with the police department. Our augment schedule, one of the things that we frequently, we frequently hear sometime is the number of staffing that we, we have in the CBD. We utilize overtime to make sure that we have adequate personnel in the Central Business District. And quite frankly, putting this in place now, we actually probably have more resources in the CBD than we have in the past. And this is basically, we review this as part of our, our augment and deployment in the Central Business District. To summarize, the downtown enhancement plan, the mission of the downtown unit will remain one based on community-oriented policing, how reinforcement of criminal violations will continue to take precedent. And basically, what that means is that we will try to identify those individuals that continuously cause, create problems or who may not be in compliance, and use a more proactive arrest approach versus issuing warnings or citations. We continue our enforcement will consist of proactive enforcement of criminal violations, which includes proactive arrests versus citations for repeated nuisance and alcohol-related crimes. It is our goal, by having this plan in place, we will continue to see some of the benefits, particularly with some of our more problem individuals in the, in the Central Business District, while at the same time communicating and having an open lines communications with our business owners. And that's the 2014 downtown enhancement plan, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
So, I know this was downtown, but for the graffiti guide...
So, I know this was downtown, but for the graffiti guide, et cetera, are we doing anything to reach out to the other business districts and just have, give, allow that information to be available? I mean, I'm thinking West Asheville.
Yes, particularly, a lot of the problems we've seen in West Asheville, we're communicating with the business owners, sharing information, going to different community meetings, and trying to make sure we have as much information that they can give us as well as what we can provide them as well to address the issue. I think the new graffiti ordinance that was passed is going to have a significant impact on that, working with our business owners.
I really don't have a question, Mayor. We had the opportunity of seeing this earlier and getting it at public safety, but I'd just like to make a comment, wearing my downtown business owner hat, that these things are really working, and we really are seeing it. We're seeing more activity, the contacts by officers with businesses, it's really picked up, and the presence, I think is good. I think that we really have benefited from these, the implementation, or the pieces that have been being put together before, this didn't just all come together in one shot, it's been happening over a period of time, and I think that by and large, the feedback has been very positive, and as we're seeing full implementation, I think we'll really see an improvement in downtown safety, and it, that really, sometimes we get carried away, I think, with incidents that happen, and people overreact, but there are a lot of residents in the city of Asheville that have not felt comfortable coming downtown sometimes, it just, would like to dispel that thought that you're unsafe. I think we're one of the safest cities in the state, and I appreciate what the department does to make that happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, I have, on here you'll see quarterly reports, but there's no presentation that goes along with that, but the materials are provided and attached electronically to the agenda. The next is the presentation of the 2014-15 Annual Operating Budget. Barbara Whitehorn will make the presentation.
Hi, Barbara Whitehorn, Finance Director for the City.
And Barbara, I would just, just as you're getting set up here, this is a presentation, this is not the official
Right.
...public hearing on the proposed budget, so that will be, if you'll, maybe you're going to do your timeline and tell us when we're going to be
Yeah, at the end, we'll go over the timeline.
All right, great, thank you.
I've found my page down, so, you know, I know what I'm doing. And I have Tony here to back me up, and I have to make sure I'm good. All right, so we started off this budget with, this budget season with three key goals from City Council, and that was begin implementation of the Police Strategic Plan, address employee compensation issues, and some transit system improvements that we were hearing from all over were really necessary. Additionally, we were told we needed to implement a graffiti initiative and develop a capital improvement plan. So, looking at our priorities, and there are those cool little flashy checks that I still don't know how to make them flash, but hey, priority was the Police Strategic Plan. Compensation, we've worked into the budget, we're going to have a compensation plan study in this coming up fiscal year, and we've budgeted 3% across-the-board compensation pool for increases. Vehicle replacement, part of our capital plan, is to begin a vehicle replacement program of police vehicles that at this point are really quite old, so we're hoping to get those replaced in a reasonable timeframe so that we have more of a five-year life on those rather than a 10-year life. Take-home vehicle program will come from that vehicle replacement, and I know most of you've heard this all before, and then management structure changes, which they're working on. Employee compensation, there's that 3% pool, that's equivalent to 1.5 million in the general fund. That 1.5 million, we have managed savings in the current fiscal year, and when I say "we," the staff, the department directors, the managers, the frontline staff, everyone has worked very hard to manage budgets so that we saved as much money as possible and didn't spend everything, so that 1.5 million is actually going to be savings from this year that we will roll into the increases for next year, and the fund balance will still be maintained at the desired level. So here's our fund balance, this really cool chart that kind of shows, you know, how things were going along really great, and then they weren't so great for a while, but now they're improving again, and we anticipate being able to still contribute $500,000 to unassigned fund balance. All right, another priority, transit improvements, Sunday service, I know you've all heard this and I've heard this, limited Sunday transit service will be added in January of 2015. Route C has been an ongoing issue because of the transfer wait times to get where people needed to go. A change, a reengineering and a change to make that work better will also be implemented in January 2015. Okay, priority, graffiti initiative. You all adopted a graffiti ordinance in April 2014, and there will be a 90-day graffiti removal initiative, city assistance with the removal, and that will go from July 1st to September 30th, and there is a general fund balance allocation of $300,000 to fund that 90-day initiative. Okay, we've got some legislative stuff going on, you know, because occasionally they look at Asheville and, you know, think they need to do something. So, our water system, the disposition is still uncertain, the judge heard arguments on Friday, May 23rd. We should have a decision in the next few months, is that?
Well, according to the judge, we may have it in the next few weeks, probably two weeks, something like that.
So we may have a clue sooner. All right. Privilege license tax reform, as of Friday. The latest version of HB 1050 is that they will repeal the privilege license tax entirely as of July 1, 2015, and that in fiscal year 2014-15, cities will only be allowed to levy privilege license tax on businesses with a physical location within their city. Analysis that we've done shows that if that passes, we will lose a minimal amount of money. Most of the businesses that pay privilege license tax in Asheville are in Asheville. Those that aren't are generally contractors that come from the outside and pay a $25 fee to do business in the city. So that's not a significant loss. Now, next year, that's a different thing. All right, so getting into the funds. The general fund, I've got the 2014 adopted budget, the revised, estimated, and then proposed for '15. Our revised budget this year was, we were anticipating spending down fund balance. Our estimated, we're actually saving a bit, and then there's our proposed for 2014-15. Enterprise funds, water fund has its continued stable performance. Rate adjustments based on the long-term model were adopted on April 8th. Those are the small adjustments that we make annually to keep up with costs and capital improvements. $10.1 million in pay-go investment in water capital improvements are planned for fiscal year '15. Stormwater fund, and you all have heard about the tiered approach that we have proposed for the stormwater rates, and the additional funds that we will get from that tiered approach will be used for capital improvements in the stormwater system. Transit fund, continued financial pressure. We do have the addition of the limited Sunday service and the reengineering of Route C. The general fund support is increasing $534,000. This is a little less than we had anticipated. I don't know if you all recall, the first time I talked about this, it was about 630. That's down a little because we've identified some other sources of funding that will help offset the costs of the additional services. The parking fund, strong revenue growth, no adjustments are necessary. We are maintaining the $616,000 in support to the transit fund from the parking fund.
Do, I'm, just to pause there, the $534,000, is that the total amount of general fund transferred to the transit fund, or that's the increased amount?
That's the increase. Do you want to know how much the whole thing is?
If you have it, but you can be looking at it.
Okay, Tony will look it up, and I'll keep going. Okay, US Cellular Fund, oh, do you like my awesome pictures? The internet's a wonderful thing. Strong performance in fiscal year '13-14, high event load, which we anticipate continuing. There are also some anticipated savings from outsourcing custodial operations, and there will be no increase in general fund support. Employees and positions, we wanted to just go over fiscal year '14 adopted, revised, and proposed, the positions in the different funds. So I just have it up there for you. I don't think you want me to read it to you, I assume. And the capital improvement program, and I know you all have heard me talk about this enough to know that this is my favorite topic. I thought this time, because we're in a forum with the public, I would give some definitions, because these are terms we're going to use over and over and over, and a lot of them are so similar, but it's really important to know the distinctions. So what we have is a capital improvement program, and what that is, is the entire program across the whole city over 20, 30, 50 years. It's the entire program. A capital improvement plan is our five-year rolling project schedule. That can be a 10-year rolling project schedule, but it's the actual plan that we've put together, we've identified projects, we've come up with some estimated cash flows, so that's the actual plan that we're putting in place. And then the capital improvement budget, or the capital budget, that's the single-year capital budget that will be adopted annually with the operating budget. So those are kind of the three key pieces, and it's from like the biggest to the smallest, but they're all really, well, really important. And then CIP, and this is one of those terms that anybody that works for a city throws around like, like it's nothing, of course you know what CIP is. Well, I could be talking about the capital improvement program, capital improvement plan, capital improvement projects, or construction in progress. So, really, I kind of recommend not using CIP too much. Doubtless you'll hear us use it quite a bit, but it can mean any of those things, though we try to go with work in progress for our assets that are being built, so that we don't confuse capital improvements and construction in progress. So that was my fun lesson for the day. I know you've all seen this slide, this is my fun slide where it's 222. You all increased the tax rate last year, 3 cents, but 2 cents of it towards capital investment, 1 cent for capital maintenance. That 2 cents equates to $2.2 million per year, and then staff spent two long torturous days sitting together and trying to prioritize projects and come up with reasonable cash flows for that first draft of a five-year plan. So this is what we did in 2014, using our usual pay-as-you-go model and the 2.2 million additional. These were the projects that we ended up with, there were some others that we started And then we're going to leverage the funds going forward. 2.2 million in additional projects can be funded annually, like we did this year, or we can save 2.2 million a year and do one big project every 10 to 15 years, and this would be how that capacity would look, you know, gradually we would build up to be able to do one big project. Instead, we are embarking on what is called a draw program, where we do short-term construction financing for year one and two, when the project is in design and in construction, and then when the project is complete, we issue long-term debt for the life of the asset. So if it's a full street, it could be 30 years or 50 years, you know, depending on the specific asset. With that program, our capacity for projects, when we use some, continuing to use some pay-go, some installment financing, and special obligation bonds, we actually have the capacity for $90 million in projects over five years. We also have external sources of funds, grants, and partnerships, with a total cost of projects planned for '15 to '19 of $132 million. So you can see 132 million versus, in the first five years, 13.3 million. Leveraging those funds really gets us a lot more bang for the buck. So here's our opportunity, if we want to kind of look at how this changes how we spend our money. In 2009 to 2013, we spent almost $42 million in capital projects, and that included issuing some limited obligation bonds. Our plan for '15 through '19 is 84 and 1/2 million, the total's 132, but 84 and 1/2 is the money that will actually come from the city, the remaining is from external sources. So this really is a huge leap forward for Asheville as far as investment in our infrastructure and our community. Project criteria, safety, the council strategic goals of economic growth and sustainability, affordable housing, high quality of life, whether we had outside funding of sources, and return on investment from a triple bottom line point of view with social, environmental, and financial impacts on the community. This is our project summary of what kind of projects we're going to be doing in the next five years. We have affordable housing, public safety, multimodal transportation, economic development, quality of life, and maintenance projects, and that's the 132 million total. This is the cash flow for 2015, we anticipate spending $24 million, 24 and 1/2. And the capital budget you'll see in your budget book is 18,658,728, and this is a reconciliation between the two, because the cash flow is the actual money that's going to go out the door. Then, the 2015 pay-as-you-go is in the operating budget, so you take that out, project management, we pull that out. Previously adopted items are items that were adopted in previous budget years, and that's the 8.2 million. And the cash flows, which we're adopting right now in this budget, include '15 and '16, so that we can issue two-year construction financing with the long-term debt at the end. So those total cash flows that are not already included and previously adopted are 13 million, and then the 2015 cash flows are 8.3 million, and that leaves you with your capital budget of 18.6. Sorry, I know that's kind of technical, but I wanted to make sure, like, when you're going, cash flows are 24, why does my budget book say 18.6? That's why.
That's good, because we have one person who'll understand it.
Yeah, you know, yeah, I wrote
And she'll ask, so you better just tell us.
Okay, and then in summary, I just want to give you the overall, you know, budget numbers, all of the funds, about $147 million. The capital budget, total capital budget, is about 30 million. Now, those little asterisks are because the pay-as-you-go is really up in the operating budget, but I wanted you to be able to see that the pay-go for the general government is 2 million, pay-go for water is 10 million, and that's included in that 147. So the total budget is actually the 18 plus the 147, so it's a $166 million budget. And the summary, we have a continuation budget that meets the council key goals, no tax rate increase, I just feel like I want to shout that from somewhere, no tax rate increase. We are not suggesting there should be one. And we have a capital improvement program that I think is really going to be a great thing for the city. And here's our budget process calendar. Today is May 27th, and this is the proposed budget presented to City Council. On June 10th is our public hearing, and on June 24th should be adoption, formal adoption of the budget. Oh, and before I forget, because I'll forget, I want to thank my staff and all of the other city staff that helped me so much putting all of this together this year and really getting, let me hit the ground running starting here, so, so thank you.
Do we have any questions? Yes?
Yes. No need to answer these tonight, but maybe address them later?
I think that the transit contract is up for renewal or renegotiation this fall, so I'd just like to understand if we budgeted any effect, positive or negative, with that?
I'm not sure, but I do know we're considering doing an RFP for that, and looking at re, kind of reengineering the contract.
Okay. Um... On the sales tax, I see that we're below budget in the current year. That was in, or we're projecting to be below budget in the current year. So I'm assuming that the budget for '14, '15 reflects what actually...
Reality?
Yeah.
Yeah. We, this year, we had budgeted a 5% increase in sales tax. And jump up and correct me if I'm wrong, right? Right. And we're coming in at 3.5? 3.5? So is that what we budgeted for next year, 3.5?
3.4.
3.4. So we budgeted slightly less than our actual increase this year.
Perfect. And then, on page 26, I was unable to reconcile actual to the new budget by $55,000. And I'll walk you through that sometime, but maybe we can... And then the other question I had is, one of the things that we're hearing is that if we're going to stick with our short-term rental rules that we have in place right now, that we don't have headcount to enforce what's actually in place. So, again, do we have a plan to actually fulfill, being able to actually enforce the law that we've got on the books right now? Again, you don't need to answer that, because you probably have to...
Yeah, I couldn't speak to that, but I can definitely check on it.
Okay. The non-departmental public safety, I, it says that we pay one-half of Buncombe County's costs for that program. Just curious whether other cities kick in for that, and would like to hear from the chief whether he feels like that program, those programs are effective.
Okay.
And on the non-departmental community development area, if my reconciliation's working, it looks like we're looking at a reduction of funding of about $140,000 from last year's budget to actual, to next year's budget, and maybe I misunderstand, but I'm just kind of asking whether...
Like, whether that's correct and how that works?
Whether that's correct and how we...
Right. How we arrived there.
And I think you just answered one question, because capital plan, I'd like to see how the projects that have already been approved compare to the cash flow, but I think you just gave that to me.
Okay, great.
Other than that, no questions. And great job. Very great job.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, this is, this process has been fantastic. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it. This is fifth budget, and this is the, I think it's the most detailed information that we've got and smoothest process that we've had, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, curious about the 3% employee raises. I know that during the recession, we were just trying to white-knuckle our way through it, and so we froze a lot of that, and we seem to be kind of returning to normalcy in that regard. And so I'm curious, I guess this is more a question for the manager around, you know, will we return to that 3% increase being an ongoing policy, just that we can kind of expect to see built in, or is that something that will, the council will continue to look at year after year?
What we'd like to do is complete the market data, the compensation plan analysis, which Barbara mentioned, to figure out where our benchmark positions fare in terms of other employers, Buncombe County employers, who compete for our employee workforce, and professional positions, management positions, technical positions in a larger state market. So we'll complete that analysis, and we'll be making that information available to you. That'd be third-party analysis, so it's objective, and that will be a basis for us to build market adjustments, if necessary, in next year's budget planning process, work sessions, council retreat, first of the year, that kind of thing. The other thing we want to do is ask council to consider adopting an update to our personnel policies. And those personnel policies are due for revision, but when it comes to compensation, we believe that it would be important to, for future planning, not to get behind with the Consumer Price Index and the cost of salaries. And we've looked at some other organizations where their boards have adopted a policy and said, "When you reach the April timeframe," or something like that, "you do an annualized cost of living analysis, and that is automatically taken care of." So it's not an independent budget decision, but it's an adjustment that's made based upon objective calculation, and your entire scale moves with that. And so we would be coming back to you with that in the fall, in the late summer or fall timeframe.
That sounds great, Gary. That's something I'll be really be interested in, is just kind of getting to a place where that compensation matches the cost of living in a reasonable way. Also, the, built into the CIP here, there's so much, so many things that we haven't done for the last several years. There's a lot of maintenance that got deferred over the recession years, and that's represented in the capital budget around fleet replacement, a roof replacement, and a number of other items as well. And it's really gratifying to see us get caught up on that. I also don't want to get stuck in that place where neglect of our fleet and neglect of these other things becomes normal. So to see those reinvestment pieces is really important if we're going to maintain a quality of service for the city.
Definitely.
And I'd also want to just thank council. In looking at these transit numbers and looking back over the last several years, this iteration of council and the previous iteration and the previous iteration have all been there for transit, even when, when the economy was really getting hit and everything was getting hit, everybody was, has been there for transit, and to see these investments in the system going forward is really gratifying. I'm just grateful for that. Want to tell everybody that there is a fantastic website called avlbudget.org, put together as a partnership between the Asheville Code for America Brigade and the City of Asheville staff, that is an interactive data visualization of this year's budget and how it stacks up to previous year's budgets. It's a, it's the first rollout of this, and there's, a lot of other ornaments are going to get hung up on it in the future, but we encourage everyone to go have a look at it and give us feedback, and we're hoping it's another way that everyone in the city can have a look at the budget and come to understand it and come to participate in it. And lastly, the CIP program here, the way you've broken it out is housing and safety and transportation, development, maintenance, and quality of life. Quality of life is basically parks and recreation, but as I look through this, I identified 29 of the CIP items that are actually going to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Asheville, whether it's road resurfacing, or sidewalks and greenways, or transit, or the affordable housing pieces, that these investments, they fall under these, all these little categories, but there is going to be this overall improvement for all the citizens who utilize all these different areas. I said that was the last thing, I wasn't, I wasn't correct. There's one more thing. With the affordable housing funding, what we've got right now is $500,000 built into the general fund towards the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And then in the five-year CIP, additional dollars that have more flexibility within them, that may go towards partnerships, that may go towards trust fund. And I guess what I'd like to see going forward is council consideration around where we want to be for trust fund, and whether we need to, over and above trust fund monies, be looking at those partnerships, the additional partnerships, whether we're looking at land banking or some other ways of approaching affordable housing. I don't want to get us too hamstrung in this budget. I'm comfortable kind of where we are right now, but going forward, between now and fall, when we come forward with some kind of broader goals around affordable housing, I'd like us as a council to be thinking about where, where does that Affordable Housing Trust Fund number need to be? So I appreciate y'all's consideration on that. Thank you.
Barbara, thank you. I have a kind of fairly technical question about the stormwater fee. Should I go ahead and...
You can go ahead. I may not be able to answer it.
Okay. Okay. McCray's here. Well, as you've talked about here, and I'm pleased to see, is this year, we're introducing a tiered system to the stormwater fee, whereas in years past, if someone owned a small house, a 500-square-foot house, or a 4,000-square-foot house, the stormwater fee was the same. And it was brought out to me actually by constituent earlier this year about the fact that he owned a couple of very small rental cabins in East Asheville, and that he felt it was unfair that he was paying the same rate as somebody that had a large, much larger home. And so, again, I'm appreciative we've introduced the tiered system here. And the way I understand it is that for homes, for properties between 225 and 2,000 square feet, the storm, the new proposed stormwater fee would be $2.50 a month, or for 2,000 to 4,000 square feet, $4 a month, and then for 4,000 and up, $5.50 a month. The question I have is, how are we determining that square footage? Is it strictly the footprint of the house? Is it driveway? How are we doing that?
Actually...
Because I'm sure that question's going to come up for homeowners.
I can answer that, because McCray's gone over this with me. It's the footprint of the house and the driveway. Whether or not the driveway is gravel or paved doesn't matter, because once you pack that dirt down, like my driveway's essentially grass, but it's completely packed down, and that means that the water rolls off of it, so it's considered an impervious surface. So anything that is like a footprint of a house, a patio, and a driveway, things that water actually just flows off of rather than soaking into, that's what counts towards that number.
Okay. And is this going to be a staff function to evaluate homes?
And actually, we've got most of Asheville complete. I think the last I heard, three or three weeks ago maybe, Gary, I don't know if you remember, like 1,100 homes left to do.
Let me just suggest that we provide you and council with some examples. It's done on, it's done on our geographic information system, it's aerial photography, they can show you some examples, and you can see how it's calculated with some actual homes and properties.
Okay. Are we prepared to do that tonight, or is it...
We'll provide it in the packet with the answers to the other questions.
Great. Okay, thank you.
So you'll have it and be able to speak to it or answer any questions at the public hearing in two weeks.
I guess the only other thing I want to say for folks that are listening at home is that if, particularly if you live in one of those smaller properties there, the impact of stormwater fee is relatively negligible. It'll go from $2.34 a month to $2.50 a month. So I'm pleased to see that, and gradually rises the property, the size of the property and driveway and home rises too.
Yeah. This is a small item, but you mentioned that being prohibited from collecting professional license fees from out-of-town businesses won't have much effect in the coming year. The following year, if they pass the legislation and end the professional license fees, that's a fairly substantial amount of money.
Yes.
In the information from the General Assembly, the sponsor of the bill claims that changes in the state's sales tax law will make up for that money, and I'll be interested to see what staff analysis is of that going forward. It's not an immediate item, but they're claiming that we're going to be made whole, and I don't trust the General Assembly very far.
I think most of the calculations they're making are based on aggregate numbers across the whole state, which does make it a little more difficult for them to predict what's going to happen in one specific locality. So that's one of the reasons that their numbers and our numbers are so different.
Okay. Anybody else have a question or comment? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll have a legislative update from Robin Kern, our new city attorney. I don't know how long I'm going to call you our new city attorney.
Well, I...
Oh, you're not going to do it? Okay.
Well, we're doing that, we're sort of have a joint effort. Paul worked very hard on putting this together with his staff, and came to me, and I said, "Oh, wow, I'll help you out, but it's pretty much done."
Okay, Gary, this is an inauguration...
As a matter of introduction here, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Paul Featherston, our new assistant city manager, and we welcome Paul. He comes to us from a comparable position with the city of Boulder, Colorado, and three previous management posts in Connecticut. So very excited for Paul to be here, and I think this is an example of, for somebody who's been here on the job a week, they just, Paul's just itching to get his hands dirty and go to work. So we welcome that.
Well, and I would mention two things. Paul went with us to Raleigh Friday. Just, we like to sort of haze new employees and let them go to a lawsuit hearing when they start work, so he dutifully sat through our water hearing on Friday, which was a good introduction. And I think it's Colorado.
It is. Colorado.
Not Colorado. Anyway, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I want to thank Robin and Alex Carmichael for helping put together this presentation. I've been here six days, so there are disclaimers to it. This is a legislative short session, as you know. It started 13 days ago. It's an extension of the regular session, and as you know, there's eligibility requirements to be a bill in the short session. So far through earlier today, there's 326 bills that have been introduced, and you can see the division between the House and the Senate. The deadlines, there are some deadlines which all end tomorrow, so there should be no new bills after tomorrow. And we're going to briefly go through just the status, Robin and I, we had a great conversation with Jack, the lobbyist, this morning to get us the latest information, and so that's what we're going to provide you with today. There's two things that we're going to do for you, is you receive, you're going to receive an update every two weeks at a council meeting, but you'll also, and the public will have, the list, comprehensive list of bills that the city's tracking. And the council received that earlier today. So the first bill is the Governor's Coal-Ash Action Plan. This one passed on first reading and is currently at the Agricultural Committee, and we will know more about the status, and we'll continue to monitor it. Next one is the Energy Modernization Act. This one is a drilling, a fracking bill, basically, but it contained an 8% cap on property tax. That was the most significant provision for Asheville. That provision has been replaced with a study, and based on what Jack told us today, that we expect it to move through the House unchanged, other than technical changes, but we'll continue to monitor this. Then there's the Zoning, Design, and Aesthetic Control Bill. This would restrict the local government's ability to institute design and aesthetic controls for a single and two-family homes. This one has been referred to the Rules Committee, which means it's unlikely to come out of the Rules Committee, but we'll continue to monitor that.
That's correct. And I think the first information that we had a week or so ago was that this was sort of a done deal, and it was going to pass no matter what. And then we heard that, even though it passed the House, that it would go, there were a couple of senators that perhaps were not in support of it. And then now, we seem to be told that it's gone into a committee and is highly likely that it's not going to pass. So that's sort of where we're, that's a bit, sort of a change of what we've been told in the last few weeks. So I think that's good news.
Good news.
The next bill is the authority to adopt certain ordinances. This one had a couple provisions of importance to Asheville. It would remove limits on local governments enacting environmental ordinances, so that's a good thing for Asheville. The broader impact, that does not impact Asheville, is that it would have, it adds that it would undo previous approvals of water supplies approved after January 1, 2012, but that does not apply to Asheville. It will apply to a number of other communities, be a detriment to them, but not to Asheville. The next item is the authority to adopt local ordinances. This, the provision in here has to do with the local government's ability to regulate trees on private property. And the news that we have is, the rumor that we have is that it is, this restriction will be removed, but we'll continue to monitor this. So the tree restriction on private property for local jurisdictions, to our knowledge, is going to be removed.
That's great. And just to chime in, this is another one where it was in, it was out, it was in, and now we're told it's going to come out. We have done some research and have some, perchance it happens to stay. You know, we're prepared to do a resolution, or we have one in the works, but it's very comprehensive, and I can't imagine the impact would be significant across the state, not just to Asheville. So hopefully, it will come out as they tell us it will.
The next one is the most confusing for me as a new person, but the omnibus tax law changes, which is the privileged license tax. law changes, which is the privileged license tax. The Finance Director touched on it briefly in her presentation. It's the same information that we have, is that originally passed the House with a $100 cap per physical location. Our understanding is this evening that the, there's a proposed committee substitute, which is being considered this evening by the Finance Committee, which limits, will repeal the city's authority to levy the tax in fiscal year 1516, but puts limits on it for 1415. So it's the same information the Finance Director had.
This one is a hour-by-hour work in progress, just requires constant monitoring. And the League of Municipalities is taking the lead on trying to negotiate a compromise with the Senate and House leadership on behalf of cities. So we're working closely with the League. And on this, they're keeping us up to date and providing information as needed.
They're apparently having a meeting tonight--
Yep.
--at 7:00. And I guess the League, according to Jack Zort, that they kept, you know, had half a dozen proposals to try to sort of compromise. But they're right now at this place where they're actually proposing to do away with it entirely. But I think his thought is that even if that were to come out of the House, that, I mean, out of the Senate, that the House would not, would not sign off on that. And it could end up going back to several compromises and back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. So we may have a good ways to go on that as well.
And I would just add, the Director for the North Carolina League of Municipalities, Paul Meyer, attended our court hearing in Raleigh on Friday because obviously the water issue is key for cities across the state. So he wanted to make sure he was informed and first person on that issue. But he felt somewhat encouraged that there may be an opportunity for compromise on this issue. And next week, the League will host city councils from around the state at the legislature and have an opportunity to interact with legislators. And I'm certain that this will be discussed. And I will plan to be there, and I think some others on council will be as well.
And finally, there's a number of other proposals that the city is monitoring. One that we wanted to highlight is a priority for the Council's graffiti. There is no bill at this time. It's not eligible as a standalone bill in a short session. There are, as you know, ongoing conversations with the delegation as whether or not graffiti could be included as an amendment to an eligible bill. So that is the update we have on the major significant bills for Asheville. We're certainly happy to answer any questions you have on any others.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Okay. That concludes the presentations. And now we're moving into the public hearings. The first is a public hearing to permanently close an unnamed alley off of South Ann Street. Greg Schiller, welcome.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, pleasure to be here this evening. Like the mayor said, we're seeking approval for a resolution to permanently close an unnamed alley off South Ann. This is, that's to the north, there's Patton Avenue. The building to the right of the proposed closure area is the Old Marita Bread Company. Back in February, this issue was brought to the Multimodal Transportation Commission, and they voted unanimously to close this unnamed alley. It is council's, I'm sorry, it is staff's recommendation that we approve this resolution. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to close the unnamed alley off Ann Street. Second?
All right. Anyone wishing to speak on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next and last public hearing is a public hearing to consider conditional zoning at 20 and a portion of 28 Deverve Road from RS8 Residential Single Family High Density District and Highway Business District to Office District/conditional zoning for the construction of a dental clinic, including a request for modifications to the landscaping and parking. Julia Fields will make the presentation.
Mayor Manheimer, Members of Council, this is, as you indicated, a conditional zoning request from Dr. Thomas Morton, who proposes to construct a new dental clinic at 20 Deverve Road. That is the location of his current clinic. The subject property consists of one parcel, .21 acres here, that's currently zoned HB, and that's where the current dental clinic is located. But also includes a portion of a property that is a total of .6 acres that's zoned RS8 located at 28 Deverve Road. But what you're only looking at in terms of the conditional zoning is this back portion of the property. So your conditional zoning applies to this area in general. The .6 acre portion that again is zoned RS8 contains a single-family home and about Green Hill Avenue. This is Green Hill. Here's Deverve. Patton Avenue runs about right here. And the portion that would be included in the conditional zoning application is .378 acres. So a total of .58 acres is what you're looking at. What would happen is that the property would be subdivided. This piece of property would remain RS8, and the single-family home would remain. And again, what you're looking at in terms of zoning to office, conditional zoning is the rest of that property. Site is bordered by properties zoned HB to the east and to the south, containing a medical equipment and clinic here. And this is a large parking lot for a restaurant that fronts onto Patton Avenue. And then also, there's residential properties along Green Hill Avenue and Deverve Road here that are zoned RS8. The proposal, as indicated, is to conditionally zone the property to Office CZ to allow for the construction of a new clinic that would be located approximately here. And I'll get to the site plan in a minute on the property. And again, the portion containing the single-family home would be subdivided off and would remain zoned RS8. Parking, and let me go ahead and go with the site plan. I'm going to try to-- This again, here's Green Hill. Here's Deverve. And here was the portion that was previously zoned highway business and where the dental clinic was located. You can see here, this is where the dental clinic is proposed. Parking is proposed to largely be located off of Deverve, although there is a proposal for access to four parking spaces, two that would be in a garage within the building and two surface parking spaces that would be accessed off of Green Hill Avenue, and those are designed to be for employees only. 21 spaces per our ordinance would be required for the facility as it's proposed. There's a total of 19 between the surface parking here and the four parking spaces here that are shown. So there's a deficit of two parking spaces, so a modification has been requested. And staff is supportive of that because of the information in terms of the employees and the treatment rooms that are proposed here, but also because some of the space that we had to count as office per our ordinance is actually in the basement and really, could only really be served as storage. So we didn't see a real need to count that as actual office space. The proposed building will be one-story in height. I won't go over the elevation. I think you have a copy of that. It's sort of a residential suburban kind of a structure in nature. Gross floor area of 6,800 square feet and a footprint of 3,400 square feet. Landscaping is compliant with the exception of a very small portion of maneuvering. There's a buffer that's required back here. We don't count access drives in terms of not meeting the buffer, but there's a very small maneuvering area here that technically doesn't meet our standards in terms of parking coming into the buffer area. So there is a modification needed to grant that very minor encroachment there, but all the plantings are compliant. So staff is supportive of that modification in addition to the modification for parking. So staff is recommending approval with the modifications, all the standard conditions, and a couple of other conditions. One condition being that the subdivision would, recombination would need to be approved and recorded prior to the issuance of permits. And that, per the UDO, this sort of goes without saying, but we'd like to go ahead and make it a clear condition that, per the UDO in the Office District, all activities must be conducted between the hours of 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. So that was staff's recommendation. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on this matter at their meeting on May 7th. Three people spoke, and they are the owners and resident of this particular piece of property, which is 34 Deverve Road. Their concerns primarily related to drainage and to traffic issues. But following that public hearing, the commission did vote unanimously 5 to 0. Two folks were absent at that meeting to recommend approval to the City Council, including support for the modifications and the recommended conditions. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Any questions at this point? Are we going to? We normally have a motion, but I can open up the public hearing first. But yes. All right. I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this? Yes, sir.
My name is, uh, I'm Mikell Long. My parents couldn't be here.
Go ahead and just say your name for the record before you--
Mikell Long.
Okay.
My parents are in Charlotte. They're 70 and 76-year-old. They couldn't make it down here. And I wanted to ask if I couldn't have a few more minutes. There's a lot of information and I have a, I couldn't, I couldn't get all the bits and pieces I needed together. And I tried really hard, called everybody, but I just, it's a lot of stuff to gather and try to understand. And just, I got a few more minutes to try to explain things.
Is that all right?
Five minutes, son?
I'll be as quick as I can.
Five, Maggie will keep the time. So five minutes.
And Julia, could you use one of the pieces that you actually had here? The first one?
It's right here.
Yes. So it's not really clear, but this is where I live and back here is where my gardens are. Basically, I've redone all this area here and raised up the area because of the runoff that was coming from the residential area and the parking lot combined. In this rezoning, you're going to essentially eliminate a small portion of the green area by taking out this driveway that's right here and creating an open gateway that's going to run right into that garden. There are a list of trees that, the only thing that absorb, these are 60 and 80-year-old trees, are 100 feet tall. They absorb the sound from Patton Avenue. They absorb the view of the parking lot from this area over here. So when I'm sitting in my little garden here, alls I see are these trees. You remove these trees and you put a parking lot, I'm going to be looking right into that parking lot. Then you have the problem, which is a totally separate problem, which is that this residence here is basically, it's rundown and it's got a lot of issues as far as things go and views go. And I can start with some images and stuff, but essentially, it's just a matter of being the ugly duckling, and it's going to put me in essentially direct, well, that's me, my only comparable. And so, you know, me and my, me and my family started this, it was, you know, we basically were supplying low, medium income for the renters upstairs and for myself in the house. And so, we tried to do what I would call reasonably priced, good, good living. You know, it's not cheap. It serves service industry people, nurses, people such as that. So if I can get my bag up in here, I'll show you what I'm talking about. All right. All right. I'm having a little. And so basically, it's been, I'm not, I'm not really opposed to what Dr. Morton is doing, but when I have trash like this in the yard, a broken-down swing set, this pile of water is where that water's going to go, right there. You're going to take out this little piece of driveway here, and all that water's going to run right into here. So there's more of his house. This is that 28 Deverve place. So this is what my backyard started like. It was a big dirt pit and mud would come into it. And then over the years, and this is his tires and some stuff that he has, this is drainage, water, the way it comes, I'm going to get to this part. So over the years, this is what it looks like now. So this is my gardens. My, the resident upstairs, whenever I show him Deverve, they, Deverve's very busy, so I bring him in the backyard and say, "Hey, look at my gardens." And so it's an enticement to people. It allows me to rent the place. If all that's gone and all these trees, this is all going to be gone. And more importantly, this is what's going to happen. He's going to cut that garden right in half. This red area is where all those trees are going to be gone, and that driveway is going to come right up to here. This is, you know, within this little area here is where I sit and drink my wine at night. You know, this is where I relax. I, my job is 24 hours at this house. If something goes wrong in the house, I have to go and fix it. So the only place I have to go is kind of outside the house. If the residents are there, even if they're doing normal stuff, I'm still at work. So my backyard is my only solace. That's where I go to sit. And so it seems like it's not a big deal, so you realize that that's right in my backyard. And the fact of the matter is, I'm not sure if there was a monumental survey done, but my survey is different than the survey that's there. And I haven't had the thousands of dollars to hire a survey to do what's called a monumental study, which means I have to go way far away. And I don't think an engineer designed the runoff. There's no cisterns, there's no thing, and there's no engineer that signed off on this plan. It's just an architect. So I don't know how a landscape architect can divert all that water and tell me that a few trees that are maybe going to be 20 feet tall, maybe in 10 years, are going to replace that. And so then you look at this and you say that all this area is parking lot. And if you could look at the, there is one, you can't see it. This little buffer is the only thing that stops all this water from running in that little area. And I put in gardens, I put in raised beds, and I took out the pavement and I put in gravel, and I diverted it into raised garden beds to keep the water from running onto Green Hill. Because another thing you don't see is this is organic garden. Green Hill Urban Farms, you look it up on the map, is a certified seven-year organic garden. You're going to put a direct runoff via a road into Green Hill, it's going to dump right into those gardens. So I don't understand how you can say this is not going to have a significant impact to neighbors, how it's not going to affect my income because I can't rent a place where I've got a driveway in my backyard. And then my personal thing, that I live there every day and have spent thousands and thousands of man-hours taking this really rundown place and putting all my money and effort into it, and my parents' money and effort into it, and we're barely floating and we're finally getting to this, end of this recession thing and thinking, "Well, maybe I can grow a little bit." But how can I grow? Because now I have an office space which is regulated, which can't change, and I have this buffer now between here that I can't grow this way. I can't do anything. So what I said was, well, I'm in real estate. I can't expect everybody not to grow. I want to grow too. And so I tried to come up with a solution. I said, "Well, can we put a fence here and against this back line here and proper drainage to stop the water coming in here?" I couldn't get a call back from Dr. Morton or anything, and so--
Thank you. If you want to pass the photographs, if you want us to take a look at them, you're welcome to allow the clerk to pass them around to us. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make comment on this item?
My name is Mark Wilson. I'm a registered landscape architect, principal at Broadboks Associates. It was my office that provided the site work and site planning for the project. I'd like to speak to a few points the neighbor brought up, but also briefly a clarification on just a term that Julia used. She used the term parking in the area in back. It's actually, that's vehicular turning space, it's not parking. I just wanted to be sure that you're clear on that, is that there's not going to be any vehicles parked within that, that buffer area that we're requiring, or we're asking for modifications on. He spoke about a lot of different things, but primarily, let me focus on just a couple. First of all, we had a topography survey. Excuse me, let me back up for a second. I'm a registered landscape architect. He said that there was no engineer involved, and I'm certainly not an engineer. I am a registered landscape architect, and I'm authorized and licensed by the state to be able to provide such design. So there is included within the package a stormwater design that will accommodate very adequately everything that the site is contributing currently and will in the future. There were actually producing no more impervious surfaces now than what are already on the site. And in fact, there's a, there's, excuse me. I'm getting sidetracked. Let me, let me make my, my primary point. The survey, the topographical survey that was provided for us by a licensed surveyor indicates to me what's uphill and what's downhill. He mentioned that all the stormwater's going onto his property and it's, there may be some minor surface areas that are, but primarily, it's coming down on the owner's own property. If you watch with me, what I think-- If you watch with me, what, what I think, and, and I don't want to attempt to put words in his mouth, but we've covered this territory before, so let me, let me try to explain. The water that could come down the driveway right there is moving perpendicular to this contour that you see on the plan, but then right here, it begins to turn sideways, but then by the time it reaches here, everything's flowing straight downhill. Water moves perpendicular to contours. So when I see a contour that has a slight bend in it, there is a little bit going there, but then by the time you, you see down here, that's the direction that the water's moving. So, all that said is, there's, there may be a small area that's going on to the neighbor's property, but it's, it's, in the great scheme of things, it's, it's rather insignificant.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this project? Yes.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Timothy Sadler, and I just want to point out that the applicant is not here. Is that not a little arrogant to not show up?
They're here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you know, I'd, I'd like, I'd like to hear why they couldn't find a good middle ground with the neighbor. I happen to live right in the same neighborhood and just would like to see a better spirit of, you know, approaching this complicated issue. Of course, we want to see the highest and best use of the land, but at the same time, if it's going to be compromising the local food movement that we have going here and providing significant hardship to the, to the neighbor, I just, I would personally like to hear from the applicant and, and hear why they're not able to find that happy middle ground on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the proposal?
I am the applicant.
State your full name, please.
Dr. Thomas Morton, Jr. And I do want to speak to the fact that, you know, I have, what he was just saying, tried to work in the past because we've had these issues before. You know, when he first approached me about the drainage problem, I listened to him. He wanted to put up this special little wall that was going to cost $25,000 and wanted me to split the bill with him. I looked at it and, and thought, well, there could be some problems. So I put up a nice curb on my, on the driveway there to, to any water coming on the driveway that might flow into his property, but then flow back onto mine again. So I, I thought I'd, you know, tried to handle that. The other thing I've, I've tried to do is, is with this new plan, there won't be access on that driveway, the neighbor's driveway, whereas there is access now. And as much as I've tried to stop the access without barricading it, I, I haven't been able to, but with the new plan, that access will be stopped, so there will be no traffic on that driveway except for the renters who live there. Right now, there's through-traffic going through that, that I've tried to stop with some speed bumps and stuff, but without barricading it, I can. And I can't barricade it until I redesign the office, so. So I have tried to work with him. My initial, my initial plan was to keep all those big trees back there, but with, with all the regulations for the city and stuff, sidewalks, buffers and stuff, you know, some of those would have to come down. And my initial intent was to try and keep as many of the trees as possible that we could do. So I don't know if there's any questions you have, or?
Nope. No, no, thank you.
Mayor, if Ms. Field-
Do you have a question for that?
Not for the-
Okay, no, you're fine. You can go ahead and sit down.
Ms. Field, you know, the, the issues around this stormwater drainage, the staff is recommending this for approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero to recommend its approval.
That's correct.
Could you, could you talk about the staff review of the stormwater issue?
Well, conditional zoning, as you know, is conceptual in nature because we don't want an applicant to have to fully engineer a site before they receive approval for what is a legislative decision from the Asheville City Council. So while we look at, and this did go to TRC before it went to Planning and Zoning Commission, while we did look conceptually at drainage issues, the full, fully engineered drawings in terms of both grading and stormwater would take place post-approval, should you give that. It'll go back to final TRC. At that point in time, they will need to have the fully engineered drawings. They'll have to be compliant with all of our stormwater regulations, and they will also have to get both grading and stormwater approval. You can kind of see here that there is some design, and I'm not an engineer, and, and perhaps the landscape architect can come up if you have further questions, but there are provisions here to divert the water on the site, whereas right now, nothing I could see really, there's, there's no, uh, water controls to speak of right now, except for the, the few things that the doctor has tried to do. So stormwater will be addressed. There will be less impervious surface under this plan, so that is, those are the reasons why staff is, is supportive. Couple of other things, unless you have another follow-up question to that, that I did want to mention.
I do.
I do, too.
There were some questions.
Wait, hold on, we, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just on the stormwater.
I'm just noticing with the, with the topo part here, that there is a six-foot change in elevation from basically the back corner of the house into the, the backyard there. And so with, with the stormwater improvements that you're talking about that will be part of a final plan, how will, I mean, just, can you just walk me through how someone can keep that water on the property?
This is not the Mr. Long's property. His property is here.
Oh, okay, I'm reading it wrong.
This is the dentist's property that's currently zoned RS8 that will remain a single-family home. And this is not part of the conditional zoning application. So this is not part of it. What you're looking at today is this piece of the property. So there is this house before you get to Mr. Long's property. So really, what you're seeing here is, is, is not, is not the issue, as, as Mr. Wilton explained. And again, I'm not an engineer. Here's where I think the problem is. There is-
Right.
-a larger driveway here, and as the doctor indicated, there is access to a parking area here. All of that's going to go away. All of that asphalt's going to go away, and I think Mr. Long accidentally took the aerial photo, but you can see it if you have your exhibit. You can see the larger asphalt area that leads back to existing parking. All that will go away. And so again, that's behind what staff is doing in terms of recommending approval.
Your Honor?
Julia, may I have something to add?
Your Honor, Mayor and Counsel, I believe the Development Services Director might be able to speak to just what the standards are that, in very conceptual terms, that would have to be met when the plan does come back. Would that be helpful?
It would.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we had more.
Can I ask, can I ask one? So those pictures of like the swing set and the tires, that's not on the property that we're talking about?
That's correct. The, the subject property, well presently, the property consists of two parcels. There's the, the portion of the property that was zoned HB, and then there was this larger portion that was zoned RS8. So the applicant is recombining the two parcels to redraw the property lines. So the residential piece of the property remains residential. So it's being retained. It'll still be RS8. So it's only this portion of, of the property, the two properties combined, that is included in this proposal. From a stormwater perspective, the, the project, we're only concerning ourselves with the project area, so we don't review the portion of the property that remains residential. It's not included in the scope of the work. But this project overall reduces the amount of impervious surface that currently exists. So as a result of the reduction in impervious surface, they're not required to do stormwater quality, only quantity. So they have to control the flow of the water, which is what they're doing. You see the lines that go across here. Mr. Wilson was explaining, you know, the flow of the water is primarily going to go in this direction into the planned stormwater basins. And then that water will flow into, and be discharged here below the Mr. Long's property, which is up here.
From a pipe?
Correct, into the street. And then once it enters the street or the, the right-of-way, it becomes the city's responsibility. Now, we don't see, you know, in looking at this preliminarily, we don't anticipate an increase in water flow off the property. We anticipate a decrease in water flow off the property. And no real changes, no appreciable changes coming from the residential property. So what's there now is an existing condition. It would, it would remain, if anything, maybe be improved in a tiny way.
And, and the issue about the existing tall trees, any plan to try to save as many as they can, or is there no way?
We always welcome a property owner to try to retain as many trees as possible. I don't know that it's the, it's, there are no sidewalks or anything of that nature that's required here that's removing those trees or causing the displacement of those trees. I believe it's really the, the grading that occurs in order to, to build the site as proposed. And that, you know, when you have a lot of grading activity around older, mature trees, they eventually are impacted to a degree. Oftentimes, you're better off replacing those trees.
All right, any other?
Shannon, after the project is done and complete, and hopefully it's going to work as, as designed and as suggested here, but if, if Mr. Long sees an increase or this problem continues, what recourse does he have?
If the, if the water is coming from his neighbor, he, he would have to take up the issue with his neighbor. The, the neighbor's responsibility is to move water off their property, you know, downstream, and that's their responsibility. If it were coming from the street, that would be the city's responsibility. If water were backing up as a result of a clogged storm drain system, that would be the city's responsibility. But oftentimes, in these situations, it's really a civil issue between private property owners that has to be worked out privately.
I, I mean, I think if there were an installation issue on the proposed project site somehow not compliant, then the city could enforce.
Yes, yeah. Whatever's approved will have to be realized in the field. And if we discover during inspection or post-construction that for some reason, something is not working according to the way the plans had been designed, then we would go back to the property owner and try to have them corrected.
Okay. Any other questions of staff or the applicant?
Yes.
From the, from the council? Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this proposal? Yes. Okay. I like when you guys work it out. It's nice. Please just state your full name.
My name is Elizabeth Morazani. I am Dr. Morton's wife, but I'm also assisting him in the construction of this building. I did notice on the overhead, just quickly glancing, the photos that were passed around were of our low-income rental. It's a home we have that we rent to a low-income family, so I believe in the swing sets, theirs, the tires are theirs. We're assisting them in their payments of rent for housing. Also, I believe that the garden that Mr. Long spoke of, most of that is on our land. Our survey shows that the tail end of his garden resides on our property, so.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Would you like to speak?
Hello, my name is Joseph Malky, and I had the good fortune of being a dependent of United States Airmen stationed near a nuclear tactical air force base in Holland during the Cold War. My good fortune in living in the Netherlands is that it was a very elegantly engineered society, and they had incorporated a, a means by which private interests and the social interests, meaning the, the human being at the center of the equation being those who environ that environ, that their rights were respected, to the extent that even trees, you had to ask permission from the Queen of, of Holland to cut down a tree. So given everything that we know now in the early 21st century about underground plumes and a cross-commercial potential contamination, wouldn't it behoove someone to ensure that the agricultural integrity of their organic certifications are protected in that chain of li, chemical liability that passes through this jurisdiction, and of course, into the source point polluter, which would be that potential parking lot? If we're going to take seriously the nature of molecules and ask ourselves, well, by titration, just how much is allowed? And shouldn't Asheville go the extra mile? So thank you for listening to my comments, I appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the proposal?
That was very simple.
Okay, do I have, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any other questions from council members, or do I have a motion?
Just one question.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Have we heard anything from the, there's the Greenhill Urban Farms that were mentioned that were, has, has there been any concern?
From who?
From the, there was a, just talk of an urban farm, another lot on the other side of the, of the Greenhill Street.
I have not heard anything from them.
We haven't. Thank you.
I was going to move to approve the conditional zoning as proposed by staff and subject to the conditions that were laid upon it. Second.
All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. I need a motion. That concludes the public hearings. We have one item of unfinished business, and I need a motion to recuse.
Move to recuse?
Second.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So the next item is a findings item, approval of, of findings related to our decision two weeks ago regarding planning and zoning's recommendation. And I'm going to ask the city attorney to do just a brief overview, if you will, Robin, of the process from last meeting to this one, the purpose of, of our agenda item tonight, and then I'll open for a motion of approval of the item.
The appeal that was heard on May 13th was a quasi-judicial matter, so there was evidence presented under oath and exhibits presented. And the council reached a decision to affirm the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission and approve the site plan, but what is required is there actually has to be, the decision has to be reduced to writing. And the council is charged with resolving disputed issues of fact, making findings of fact, and then conclusions of law based on what was heard at the hearing. So there was a, a great amount of evidence, and a lot of, the hearing took several hours. So what we have done in the meantime is, is take that evidence and come up with proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law which memorialize that decision, and those are what are in front of the council tonight. When those findings and conclusions are approved, that is the time when the decision becomes official. They're provided to the applicant and the appellant, and upon receipt, if there's any legal challenge or appeal, that is when that 30-day period begins to run. So tonight is an opportunity to take a look at these findings and conclusions, and if they're acceptable, to approve them, and then we'll go from there.
So just to note, we're, we're not reconsidering anything tonight. We are simply matching the draft findings and conclusions relative to the decision-making process we made two weeks ago. The public hearing is closed, so there's, there's not a public comment opportunity as well.
Correct. There's, there's no opportunity for public comment. This is, if you will, a written memorialization of the decision that you have already made, which is something that is required in quasi-judicial matters in North Carolina.
Great. So I'll, I'll open for a motion to accept and approve.
I move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law which reflect the council's May 13, 2014 decision to affirm the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of the Cambria Suites Level 2 site plan and to approve that site plan.
Second. Okay, any, any further comments or questions by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Can I add one other thing? The appellant did send an email stating several objections and suggestions that he had for these proposed findings, and I just want to say for the record that the, these were provided by the council, and you had an opportunity to review them before the final approval? Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Gordon, would you? Gordon, would you pull Lester back? We're nearing the end of the agenda, the mayor will rejoin us to conduct the rest of the meeting.
I have a few people signed up to speak, and we'll just start in order. The first one I have is Ken Michaelov.
As you know, I've been against the city using tax funds to support the art museum. I did notice in the capital budget that the project is now named Pack Place Capital Maintenance and not Asheville Art Museum. Is that the same thing as the Asheville Art Museum? Can anybody answer that?
You want to?
It's the Pack Place building itself. The reason we changed it is we refer to it as the art museum as sort of shorthand, but the money does not go specifically to the art museum. It's to improve the building that the city will own at the end of the lease term.
Thank you. I have some questions about it. Then the assumption is that the city's going to take over Pack Place and not renew the lease with Pack Place?
Are you asking if that is the assumption? I don't think the two are connected, Mr. Michaelov.
The lease that I'm talking about is the one that goes through.
Your honor, and staff, I really think that public comment is to be addressed to the council, and if the council wants to direct questions to the manager, I will assist the council in getting answers from the staff.
Let me ask this question, then. The public hearing on the budget is to be held on the 10th. I'm going to submit to you a list of questions pertaining to Pack Place that I'd like to obtain answers to at the public hearings, and not just take it under advisement. I think these are very important questions as to leasing and taking on the responsibility of Pack Place. Who gets the Colburn space, for example? How's that decision made? Is it a bidding requirement? Operating expenses? Where can I find the operating expenses for Pack Place in the current budget? Somebody could tell me that. The revenue and expense? And I would like to know both cash and in kind, because the city's going to take on responsibility and assign those responsibilities to somebody on the staff or hire somebody. And that's what I refer to as in-kind responsibilities. There's going to be overseeing of a capital project, there's going to be overseeing and supervision of a building. I'd like to know where that is in the budget. Thank you. I'll submit my questions to the, to the council.
Next, I have Roger McCready.
I'm media, not the public. And I'm very much aware that this is not a, this is public input time and not question and answer time, but I'm going to take the liberty of asking a question, if I may. Prior to coming over, I did what any self-respecting journalist would do. I called Maggie Burleson and asked her what she thought about the appropriateness of that. Maggie did what she does, she asked all of them, and they both concluded that, well, it was probably all right for me to do this. The worst you could do is shoot me down. So I'll, I'll ask what amounts to a three-in-one question. But first, I've got to preface it by giving up a portion of my precious three minutes for some historical background. On April 9th, the vice mayor attended a meeting of the Pack Place Board of Directors and announced that he and the city manager, who was also in attendance, had the authority basically to demand the board pass a resolution asking for a 60-day extension of its existing lease, which is up on the 31st of this month, in order to tie up loose ends and settle its affairs. It seemed to be a foregone conclusion that the city would take over the role of landlord of Pack Place through direct leases with its tenants. Now, at the end of, excuse me, Councilman Hunt at that time said on several occasions during that meeting that he'd been authorized to do this during a closed session that was held after the regular meeting on April 8th. And of course, that closed session was duly announced at the end of the regular session, and it was announced that would be held under Article 143, 318, Section 11, as provides for the kinds of information to be discussed in closed meetings. And certainly, Paragraph Five of that section authorizes that council may meet in closed session to establish or to instruct the public body or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body, et cetera, with regard to dealing with the acquisition of real property. So, not contesting that if that did happen, there was every right, the council had every right to discuss it. But on the next day, at the Pack Place meeting, the vice mayor, is that my three minutes?
Thank you, yes.
If there are others that wish to speak on this subject, does he have opportunities?
You can, you can have three others yield their time. One, two, I can't see behind, you said three. You've got it, you've got seven more minutes.
I don't need it, but thank you very much. The question that I had then was, if that was a matter discussed during closed session, and with the vice mayor appearing the next day at the Pack Place Board meeting, and the first question that he was asked by the Pack Place attorney, Mary Robinson, was, well, where's your resolution from this council empowering you to make this demand of us? And both the vice mayor and the outside attorney, Mr. Barber, said, well, there was no resolution, this was all oral. And the upshot of it was that nevertheless, the Pack Place Board rolled over and gave the vice mayor his resolution, in spite of the fact that he hadn't presented a shred of written evidence that he had the authority to do so at that time. Now, two weeks later, at its April the 22nd meeting, this body actually passed a resolution which basically authorized ex post facto the vice mayor and the city manager to do what they had already done two weeks previously. Now, my question is simply this. Did the vice mayor and the city manager, when they left this room on the night of April the 8th, have the legal authority to appear the following day at the Pack Place meeting and make the demands that they did? And you see, I have a problem with that, this is my Columbo voice, because there are two people seated at this table to whom I spoke in researching this story, who, to the best of their recollection, said that they couldn't recall Pack Place ever having been even discussed that evening, that essentially the sole topic under discussion was the lawsuit with MSD. So you can understand our confusion. So if that makes any sense, can anybody offer me an explanation?
Well, is this one of the ones that you, no, I guess I'm a little bit concerned here because you're asking about what happened at a closed session meeting. So.
That's true.
Yes.
That's true. All I know is that after the closed session meeting, which I'm not allowed to ask about what happened, there was no documentation produced to substantiate the claims that were made about what had happened.
Well, let me offer this, maybe, and maybe you can offer the hypothetical as to the process a city should engage in for lease negotiations, or lease extensions, or lease renewals, or whatever the case may be, which is, which is what you're talking about here.
Hypothetically.
What would the process?
Hypothetically, what would the process be? Would, would the process be for a representative of council to appear the following day armed with no actual documentation to come out of this closed session, and on the basis of his word alone, present the case?
So, so I'm going to ask the city attorney to address that now or later, since she's brand new and was not serving as our city attorney at that time. She may want to take a look at the process we used and, and get back to you.
Thank you.
Certainly want to be able to make that clear.
Thank you for indulging me, council.
I do think that because I wasn't here, I would like to, to look into it and come back with a response. I do want to emphasize that the council has no authority to discuss what happened in closed session, and I don't know what your sources are, but I believe that it can be substantiated, that a motion was made to go into closed session for that purpose, and that's basically all that was required in that, on that front. So as far as your other questions, we'll look into them and get back to you.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Brother Christopher is the other person I have signed up to speak.
Brother Christopher, to the city council and Madam Mayor. Always good to start out with a joke. How do you know when a politician's lying? Their mouth's moving. Another joke. How do you catch a politician in their lies? Oh, hold on. Oh, yeah, I want to make sure it's still recording. I turned it on when I entered the building. Thus saith the Lord God Almighty, whom I follow. It's interesting that you had the sailors from the USS Jonah, oh, I'm sorry, USS Asheville. Because the message comes from Jonah. I come with a heavy heart. Because when Jonah was told to go to Nineveh and tell them that God was going to destroy them, he didn't want to go, because he hated Nineveh, it's because they were oppressing the Jews. He ended up in the belly of a whale. Hmm, isn't that funny? Subs go under the water. In fact, if I was stationed on this ship, I'd ask for transfer. Because my hardness, or my weight, is to come to a city that I know won't repent. How do I know? By the fact that you took God out of your meeting. Didn't even at least say, hey, God, how about just coming in and watching? Let alone asking for wisdom, for the wisdom of God. He says, if you want wisdom, fear me. It is my hope that we don't hear of the USS Asheville sinking in the next year or two. Like I said, as a Navy man, I went through a typhoon. I know what can, I know what God can throw at you. And I hope that any sailor that might be watching this movie, I mean, sorry, city council meeting, and sees it, and sees the beginning of this city council meeting, not even saying, God, we acknowledge those who fought in the Revolutionary War following you. Now, when God brought the tenth plague on Egypt, he wiped out not just the leader, the slave's firstborn child, he even went to Pharaoh's house and killed his son. No one is exempt from blood for blood. You have slaughtered your wealth, which is your unborn children, and you think nothing of it, for the convenience of it. I have a city councilman who told me a certain thing, which I'm going to give you grace, sir, I will not take my tape to the press. But I noticed that that same city councilman who gave the appearance that it was the mayor that took prayer out of the city council, and it, really, he didn't want it, but I didn't hear him say, well, I'll say the prayer today. I didn't hear one city councilman say, I'll do the prayer today. So as far as I'm concerned, I am standing before an unconstitutional body, because this body was established under the God of nature.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
Good evening, once again, city council. My name is Timothy Sadler, and I just wanted to take a moment to commend the APD for a great job with the March Against Monsanto. I thought they were exceptional, and also wanted to, quick touch on some conversations that I've been having with Transit employees and, of course, Transit riders, and kind of regarding the management of First Transit, and, and really, kind of, how many issues have come up through their management? It really is discouraging to, to talk to some of the staff and hear their confidence in First Transit, and actually have been assured that they would be, their contract would be renewed. And I think that that is really troubling, you know, based on talking to the employees of the Transit, the drivers in particular, you know. There was one gentleman who noted that employee morale was somewhere in the 20% range. That's unacceptable. Of course, that's going to trickle down to the riders, and then you get new, bad publicity, like we saw, there was a, a letter to the editor recently talking about negative experience with the Transit employee. I just would encourage a thorough review of their management or lack thereof, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Joseph Malky, and first want to make a statement in response to the gentleman with the dreadlock, what was his name?
Brother Christopher.
Brother Christopher. My father was an immigrant to the United States, were part of a hated minority in the Middle East called the Orthodox Christians. And I want to say a prayer now to reneg everything that man just said. Dear Lord and Lady, Creator Almighty, please bless the men and women serving aboard the United States ship Asheville. May they always be out of harm's way and do their utmost duty to preserve the integrity of our Constitution. Amen. In terms of the issue of the bus, I occasionally am a bus rider, I'm a disabled bed, so sometimes it's actually very convenient, sometimes. And I have noticed that in terms of, I don't know if you guys are familiar with facial recognition, or any thermodynamic qualities that happen when people are under stress, have PTSD, or underpaid, or might have various types of physical pains or addictions, but if you index every single bus driver and note the tonality by which they greet, or give regards, or warnings, or do different functions, including putting bikes on buses, dealing with handicapped people, stressed-out other people, et cetera, et cetera, plus Asheville traffic, that there's a human, again, element here to the people themselves. And obviously, they need some love and care, and maybe some therapy, and maybe we need to look at the mathematical injustice of the actual routes as well. Because if you, I know you guys have been down this road many, many, many times, but a bus should stop and wait for a specified duration. Because there are those of us who are hobbling. I have my good days and my bad days, you know, there are people who have to go uphill on a motorized electrical wheelchair to get to a bus stop in rain or shine, and the hill itself, maybe they're not as smart, and they don't know calculus and how to backwards time when they leave the house to get down the ramp to go up the hill, and their motor might have been charged properly, and now they're going to miss that bus, and it creates chaos for people, especially when they're meeting appointments. So anyhow, something to consider. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I think we have a closed session motion, and we will adjourn from the closed session.
I move the city council go into closed session first to con-
to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to a lawsuit involving the following parties, state of North Carolina and the city of Asheville. The statutory authorization is contained in GS 143-318-11A3. And two, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or are not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the general statutes. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is NCGS 143-318-10E. The statutory authorization is contained in NCGS 143-318-11A1.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.